The rose, the rose. Gonna love the rose. The producer.
Senator Toddler.
Yeah, that too.
All right, I have nine o'clock, so at this time, we have to call a board. The April 20th meeting of Preston County Commission, if anyone please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you each and all, appreciate everybody on the day. Let's take a moment to honor a couple of people who passed away in the county recently. One person is Charlie Pace, who recently passed away. Charlie, having known the gentleman, really cared a great deal about this county. He was a pioneer in the recycling industry here in the county, dedicated himself to really serve the people of this county. He established, you know, he had a tire recycling center and did a lot of good in that regard, trying to help clean up the county, worked with the state, he was well-known around the state because of that tire recycling center. And if you would, I'd like everybody to please join me in a moment of silence for Charlie Pace. Thank you. Also welcome Biff Armstrong, good morning Sue, and other family members, I'm not sure all of you are welcome to Sue. Today, we'd like to pay tribute to Biff and his service to this county, I know he's really proud of the work of the county. He was the creator of the technology department here in the county, he started with county from the life of Biff, 2005, with an idea and vision of how to bring Preston County to technological age. During his time here, he guided the technology from a very boon's operation to a technology model that is one of the best in county government and state. We all, we all lost him Biff much too soon, he is not forgotten. Each day when all of us log in, we're reminded of his presence, the contributions he made to this county. And I will emphasize that he really helped this county become one of the stellar technological beacons in the state. Other counties have done a great, have done a lot to replicate us, I mean, there are counties much bigger than us, more prosperous than us, that don't have nearly the technology capacity that we have, and that does a lot to show you how much he worked. Sue, if you and your family would come up now, we'd like to present to the back.
I'm honored, Biff.
Please, Sue, can you come forward to? Come on, everybody. Hurry, cats. You're better.
Sue, would you like to turn the lights up here?
Uh, okay, we're gonna have to kinda...
Would you come around?
I will do that.
Double stack and triple stack.
I'll wait to see.
All in the back.
You were coming, but I wasn't getting around. All right.
That's right.
You good?
Yeah.
Okay, so we are having problems here.
Yes, I will go, I think you want to...
Sue, if you would, right here.
Here, you guys go a little closer.
Tall enough you can see over tall as you can.
Too short.
It won't be a problem. That's right, that's right, these masks are all good.
Sue, thank you, I'm really do appreciate, and in honor of this service here, we've got this plaque made, and we hope they're, you know, reminding you of the wonderful time that we've spent together.
Well, thank you, I know he enjoyed working with you too.
We're pretty small.
Yes, I am smiling.
All kind of...
There's beaming smiles.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Because I'm vaccinated, so I'm glad.
We are too.
Thank you, thanks you guys. Thank you, everyone, everybody, I love that.
Are you Janice, have school? Do you have all them back end?
Hey Bill?
Oh, you're very welcome, you're very good.
I didn't know which one you were.
Very well.
I don't know how else to say it. Thank you all.
I have nine through 12, so I have three classes, so I have all classes, but my English is just not...
Did you have your readers yet?
Our readers?
Oh, my readers.
No, we're in a stream, like, we can make...
Oh, that's exciting.
So, hopefully we can share it over...
That, no, that's fine, that's fine. As we need to order, we should get, um, off the stuff. We'll be fine, hopefully.
Yeah, wow, you're faster than I am.
Hey, that little car is fast.
I can drive that fast, but I never fail whenever I gotta be there at a certain time, somebody like 12 log trucks.
They're, they're working on seven down between their grids.
Oh, or they got, I was wondering about that, I went up that road, salt lake, salt lake this weekend. Biffy Beans was in Christmas, he wanted to drive around a little bit, so we took him out to his uncle's farm up on top of, it's awful salt lake. They have a cabin up there, it's right up there. So, yeah, going down the hill, so, I was like crap, I said, you know what, I said, it's a shame, I felt like, yes, it's a shame, this road ain't ten years old.
Oh, it's not, it's not nearly that, they're washed out. Yeah, that's nice.
This is the gentleman's commandant, they may, they're not behind.
You have an executive session, okay, that's fine, we have to go back in the process.
All right.
It works.
But I will do it now, real close, Commissioner, let the record show, it all through Commissioner Price, Commissioner State, Commissioner Price, and Commissioner Stunton. And if you're wondering why I pull this map out, I'm not even vaccinated, and I'm far enough away from everybody, I don't think it's too much of a danger. And everybody keeps saying they can't hear us on these videos, so I intend to speak up a little bit.
On the mic, too.
But it is on.
It is, see?
I just gotta lean in. All right, do we have anybody from the public who we should recognize at this time? Nope, all right. Review of the bills.
I got it. Look, we pay the bills, they're properly presented and approved.
Second.
All right, motion on floor in a second to approve and pay the bills. Commissioner Price.
Yes.
Commissioner Stunton.
Yes.
Yes. And for the accessory laws, we do not have anything, is that correct?
Not today.
Thank you. That brings us now down to our 9:05 appointment with Ms. Rochelle Thorn, the Parks and Recreation Commission with the Wellness in the Park Program. Good morning Rochelle. How are you this fine day?
I'm doing wonderful, are you?
I'm doing well, sunshine.
Yeah.
Life is good.
Um, am I okay right here?
You can come up, you can come up just a little bit.
We had a, we had a presentation earlier.
I saw a whole bunch of people.
Well, yes.
And I have to explain why I have to drive around and around if I'm... There you go. Um, well, good morning, I guess Dave had invited me to come and talk about Wellness in the Park a little bit, since it's true. So, we started two weeks ago on April 6th, and we're in three different locations, so we're at Mason Town Trailhead Park, we're at Brewston Mills, the dam, and Terra Alta Community Park. And so far, we've seen good interest at Brewston Mills, good interest at Terra Alta, Mason Town, not as much as interest yet, but it is early in the season, and we did have to cancel a couple of times due to the weather.
I was gonna say, I was about to tell you, start is when the weather got cold again.
Yeah, and, and so we anticipate, oh, it looks like we snow tomorrow, so we might have to, you know, cancel again, but the weather will get better as the season progresses. But, so we have, I guess, just our current status on the program is we have funding for the Brewston Mills site, the Mason Town site, and the Terra Alta site, we do not really have funding past a certain time, so we're hoping we can figure that out. And as far as our instructors go, we don't seem to have a problem finding instructors for Mason Town and Brewston, but Terra Alta is different, for some, whatever reason, we aren't having as much luck.
Dick, I think that would be an excellent job for you.
Yeah. So, yeah, if there's anybody out there that would like to be an instructor, we reached out to Camp Dawson Event Center to see if maybe they'd like to offer like a boot camp class once a week there, we didn't get your back on that. We're reaching out to people as much as we can, but...
I will give you all after this, I'm not even trying to walk myself up.
Okay, yeah, we really don't wanna see that location go, but right now, just between myself managing it, and then we have a part-time person that helps me a little bit, but between us, it is, it's gonna be a little difficult to swing that program if we don't have instructors actually there, same with volunteers, we really need to have volunteers to all three sites, and the site that, we only have one volunteer currently at Terra Alta, so it would be nice to get more, more volunteers. Right now, with Mason Town and Brewston Mills being closer to Moreton Town, we've been able to pull a lot of resources from WBU, and unfortunately, our other communities are just a little bit farther than that for them. So, yeah, so I think overall, for the first two weeks, I think we're doing okay, and we just need a little bit, maybe more human resources support. And any questions on that? And you can always find our schedules, our schedules are posted every Monday for each week on our website, on Facebook, and then the newsletter that I think you threw my pursuit. So, those are, those are posted every Monday.
Awesome.
For the week, and then we post cancellations by 4:30 PM the day of for like weather, for if anything comes up, so.
Great. Let's see if we can, the only thing I know is try to get that information out to more of the individuals who might not be, have you as a Facebook friend.
Exactly.
And that's where the issue is, so.
Is there any way to get the information into the Alpine community, there's a lot of people that live up there that commute in and have retired and come into that community, and so there might be somebody interested in...
We did have somebody reach out from there that said that they were interested in the program.
We'll work on that and be in touch.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, send me questions, anything, I did send both radio stations the information this morning, so you can't get, you know, more interest generated that way through other outlets, so, but we appreciate it.
It's been a pleasure, sir.
Yes. Don't forget to publish that, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we've got a few moments, so we have the minutes for March 30th, bringing on Tuesday, so our motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for March 30th, 2021.
Second.
Motion on floor in a second to approve the minutes for March 30th, 2021, Commissioner Stunton.
Yes.
Commissioner Price.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, please.
Make a motion to dispense with the readings of the proceedings and vacation and enter them into the record April 8th, 2021 through April 14th, 2021, and approve.
Second.
Motion on floor in a second to dispense with the reading and accept the meaning of the record of the proceedings and vacation, Commissioner Stunton.
Yes.
Commissioner Price.
Yes.
Yes.
We have two estate settlements from the clerk's office, and we'll, we approve those, Messina and Seiko.
Second.
Motion on floor in a second to approve these estate settlements, Commissioner Price.
Yes.
Commissioner Stunton.
Yes.
Yes. We have nothing from the fiduciary commissioners at this time, we have nothing of old business with new business. Think, we, we have about a minute before our next appointment.
If I could, Commissioner, you have one of your administrative supportive quicks for claim deed.
Yes.
You have a copy of that, and I believe as well as the opinion from prosecuting attorney.
Yes.
I have an executive session if you require it.
Okay.
Do you have any legal questions about the proceedings, or we can move forward with that, that Angie's here to notarize if you so desire to sign that document.
It's been reviewed with a brush.
Yes, yes, sir, and I can entertain, I just wanted to make sure that you didn't have any question, legal question.
I read through it when you emailed it, well, put it on the drive, I guess, but I remember I looked at it.
So, if we don't require an executive session, we probably could take up this matter, and Angie could notarize your signature if you so desire. So, let me just explain what the quick claim deed is, and it's for the Wayne, from the Wayne Fortney family, and I think that everyone remembers that Mr. Fortney was very generous and gave part of his estate to the Preston County Animal Shelter. There are several parties named in the quick claim, and basically what it is, is as you reviewed, the prosecutor's opinion was that this particular, these parcels that are being discussed, during Mr. Fortney's lifetime, actually, he gave it to his sons, however, they did not find that recorded anywhere, the prosecutor says that if you would desire to, I believe you get 5%, there's several other parties, that the intent is clear, that Mr. Fortney really had a desire for this to go to his sons. So, he's saying, unless you wanna legally challenge it, you could have several, a lot, a lot of money, what you would recoup from that may not, is nominal, and you could probably have more in legal fees. I believe other parties have signed, so...
I was here when Mr. Fortney called me to his house and said, I can see that you are an animal lover, and I said, yes, sir, and he said, well then, I will make provision in my estate for the animals and the shelter, and I see no reason why we would want to not honor what their request is.
Well, I present the documents then, and ask for a motion that the president be authorized to sign, the quick claim deed, and Angie's here to notarize if you so make a motion.
That would be a motion to sign the quick claim for the Fortney family.
Second.
Motion on floor in a second to sign this quick claim deed for the Fortney family, Commissioner Price.
Yes.
Commissioner Stunton.
Yes.
Yes. All right. That's it, great, that's the one's fault.
Make a motion that we go into an executive session for Mullins and Mullins representative regarding the Oui place.
Come on up.
You know, if it's a nice day, you want us to go in the other room?
Oh, no.
We have, it won't work that way, so we can step in here. You said it would be very short, would I drive to you?
That's right.
So, if you would come up.
Second.
All right, motion on floor in a second to go into the second session, Commissioner Stunton.
Yes.
Commissioner Price.
Yes.
Yes. Sorry, I thought we got a whole lot of sources there.
All right.
We're gonna go in.
I know you said this would be very short, it will be.
Well, I don't know how much of this you want, here's the whole document, he just signs, we want, there's other parties, there are no signatures there, because everybody's doing it electronically, so.
Yes, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, we just had another, you know, they all have COVID, and now it's back in that, the neighbors crossed through the quarantine, and it's, that must be that very empty, and so she had to...
Yeah, yeah, so she was, she was worried, thinking, but they were all outside, not going out to worry about it. Yeah, but she always worries about Lego.
Oh, yeah. Always thought that baby.
Yeah, he's little.
Do you have such a vision, man?
I do, okay.
Did you, did you go back to them people?
I do know it too.
Can you, can you picture any of this, we can just hold it on. I cannot, this is on my, I think I said, we said, I think we can live in. Then we have to go to the... So, we have to, then we have to go to the... I don't know. And you have to go down. Don't be asking me, I said, if you can't listen. For my seconds. I doubt it, he just, he just got away, he's together. It's too many, I can't believe it. That was because of chemicals, that was security, and I was still like, that. The one you gave me was twenty-three something, it was on the last hour, and it sounded something else. It was on the last hour and sound and something else. All the. All the. All the. I can be. I am. I am. I'm. 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 Yes. I'm. 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 You know, I'm just. You know, I'm just. I don't even consider that. I just. Yeah. I just. I said. I'm. 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 So. I'm. 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 No, wait. I'm. I'm. It's a lot. It's sad. It was one. And. Well, you know, you hear about some of the. I think it's a monster right now. There is. I mean, I'm. I'm.
Well, then I'll give you. Definitely. Just fine. So I think I'll send you. Okay. Thank you. And. That's.
And then you can. I'm. I love it. Thank you. So good. Good. Oh. From there. You just tell us. Well, I didn't talk at the. Um, a lot of. They don't. Too much. I'm not. I'm. 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 Now. Maybe that. Or. I don't. They're. Struck. I'm. Maybe. Shame. It's just. You know. Got to be. I'm. I'm. But I don't know. That's actually. Like a bond or something. Well, I could find it. I'm just taking that. I can't deliver it. It's like. For me, personally. Yeah. I'm sure. Because sometimes. When it's almost. Yeah. But just these are. They're. Best. I have to. I need to. To do. Kind of. Yeah. Good. Good. I'm. Crank. You know. Uh huh. Oh. So. Anyway, just. I just. Has to be. Just. Stay. Stay. I. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't know. Then I'm trying to look at. I'm. So. I was saying. I'm. 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 Quite. It was. You know, bodies. You. What? January. January. Yeah. I'm. Only doing. Thing. In. I'm. I'm. So we just work on. A little. Cap. So. So nothing. Your. She's. I think. He's. Sure. Sure. And. I can't. 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 So. I'm. I'm. On the one. I don't. I'm. 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 Yeah. I'm. I'm. That way. I'm. I just. Would you? Would you call? I'm. 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 She's. 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 Okay. You're. Okay. We can. Speak. I mean, has. I don't. Okay. She's. I don't want to. They're. They're. The person. I think. It's. It's. Not. I don't. The person. I don't. If it was. Okay. Show that. Show that. Okay. 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 I'll let him check that out. Um. I can't. I can't. I can't. I can't. I don't. You. Try. I want to. Say. People. Right. So. I have. I have. I'm. So. I should. I have. I have. Hey, that's. That's. I'm. Good. Okay. Give me. Yeah. So. So. But it's a nice one. Should do. Job. I'm sure. Or. Yeah. Just having. House. Honey. I'm. Yeah. I think. Um. She's. I was. Yeah. She's. 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 Or. Either. Or. She's. Seven. One. Okay. This is. She's. Well. She's. Well. And forward. I tell them. Well. Um. I think it's all right. I think. She's. She's. I'm. But that's. Maybe. I have. Why? I know. But. I think it's eleven. Okay. I check. And then we can't make these people. Do it. I know. And. I can't. So. No. I'm. But. I think they have. Shorten that. So just check the. BJ. I think it was fourteen. It's eleven. Now. Okay. She was just. She's. If she stays. The. Symptoms. And. She is passive. It's eleven days. I think she. That's fine. And you can. I think she's going. I'm. Yes. She says. It's. Okay. Well. She won't be. I forgot. I had. Maybe. I should. I have. So. Can. So. I don't. Happen. Was. Eleven days. Or not. Yeah. I think. I think. I think. I think. CDC. Yeah. I think. The CDC. So. I. The governor. Then you've got to. CDC. Because. I think. I said. If you. For. The. Not. I think. There's. But you. We just. Oh. Rita. Or. The one. The ones. Because they're still being contacted. Right. Yeah. Exactly.
But that's when you could. You know, she still has to be out. Isn't her internet? That's just the problem?
No, her internet's not. I don't know if it's her internet. Or if the. The.
Machine she's using?
If it's the machine she's using. Or if it is. The connection. The. Remote connection. That she's trying to use.
She on TeamViewer? Or she on?
Um. The other one.
Let's. Let's. Let's make sure. She's. On TeamViewer. And. Let me talk to Brandon about that. I. I find that. TeamViewer. Might look better. So.
The. The.
Well, that's easy to find out. You know. If she has one machine on one. And she has another machine on TeamViewer. She tries it. We'll know if it's. Quite. You don't always know. But she may do a better job.
But she got a new laptop.
She's. She's.
Well, she's. Just have luck. But. She's still trying to work. So she's trying to. For. So. So we've. We've got some things to. Look at. And.
Just see. You know. You know. Just check past that place.
Okay.
Because Saturday. Sunday. Tuesday. Or Friday. Saturday. Monday. What is it saying? It says. Two. You mean Mars?
No. Next. She would be. She would be. Yeah. She should be. Okay. Okay. I was. Going into. She's.
But then yes. Yes.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, I walked down there. I. Walked down that way. And. Did they go? All the gas meters all exposed? And. I stopped in and just asked. What were they doing? And she said. It was a day. Actually going down this street. And then down the side street. So. I don't know. Pressure. I don't know. I don't have. But I saw mine. Or I saw mountain gas there too. So. In the city.
Maybe just replacing those lines or something.
I don't know. They just had. You know how. Pass that door. Cap.
Yeah.
Well, all the caps that were exposed. And they have big holes. And. I'm as bad as a kid. I just went to inspect. I guess. Curiosity killed me. Cap.
Saw one day and didn't go on down. I should have.
Hey Linda. I got the levy pages. So when they. Set the levy rate, we'll need to sign. And then you can take these back to. Well, I can give them to Dee Dee. But. Because. Mary.
I'd like to have a copy.
I'm sorry?
I'd like the copy too.
Of the sign?
Oh, just. No, just of the levy rates that have been approved. Yeah.
Oh, sure. We can make them here.
That's pretty amazing.
We get. So.
We eventually get a copy. But. We get a copy from the auditor. So it wouldn't. Wouldn't be necessary.
No, we do. When she signs, we make some copies. We will. I have. You always have. I always have to send a budget with all the insurance and. Sign. Copy.
I said a conference call at ten. So if I leave, that's what's. Um.
Did you? Did you? Did you have anything going in?
I have. No, I don't. I just. But I have a conference call at ten. So I might be leaving.
I've got a. I've got a response for Mr. Baker.
You told me.
On that. No hearing.
Oh.
Did you get that stuff? That Coastal is. Timberlands doesn't want an October hearing? I didn't know if you had a file on that or not. So. Because I've got. Maybe I need to return everything to. To you. Because I think I have that stamped copy. So I'll bring it down later.
All right. Thank you. Get her back. Hey Dave. Now you got her back. You know. It's feeling for the same. You got it?
Yeah. Taylor right now. Taylor right now. Thanks a lot. All right.
Yeah. Take care.
Dave made a motion. I seconded from the section. No question.
All right. At this time. I got it. We'll set. We'll set the. The. We're going to officially set the. Twenty twenty-one. Twenty-two. That's hard to say. Uh. Tax levy rates for Preston County this time. So.
You have the regular levy rate, sir. And then you also have your.
Fire levy.
Yeah. Yes, your excess levy rate as well.
Okay. So regular levy rate for each class. Uh. For example, class one is going to be fourteen point three per one hundred. And then. For class two, it's twenty-eight point six per. Per hundred. Class three will be fifty-seven point two. And so will class four. It will be fifty-seven point two. For the levy. Fire levy. Each class will be. The class one rate will be one point one eight per hundred. And class two will be two point three six per hundred. Class three and class four will both be four point seven two per hundred. So.
The court needs to sign, sir.
Okay. So. So at this time, I have a motion to set the levy.
Um. I made a motion to set the levy. Do we need to separate? I can see. Do we need two separate motions?
I. I would. Could have been two separate motions.
Yeah, probably. Because one's a regular and one's an excess.
Yeah.
I make a motion to set the levy rate. Um.
Your regular levy.
Right.
Regular.
All right. I make a motion to set the regular levy rate. As Commissioner Smith has indicated. The percentage. For two thousand twenty-one.
I will second it. Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Yes.
I get. I'll call. Like. Out of sorts. I'm. Dave's not here.
Yeah. I know. I know. Threws the flow off. Gotcha.
All right.
All right.
Make a motion to set the fire levy rate as Commissioner Smith has indicated.
I will second it. Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Yes. All right. And I will. Get that over to. You to sign?
I'll take care of that.
Okay. And at this time, I guess I bring this down to. To you, Linda. So. At this time, we have the county clerk. And the Huggins with West Banko depository agreement and budget provisions.
I went ahead and forwarded you that a copy of this.
Yes.
Review it. And. I did share it with the prosecutor. And he has reviewed it and approved for your. Um. Signature.
All right. Motion on. Do you have a motion to approve this?
Yes. I make a motion to approve the West Banko depository agreement along with those budget provisions that are attached.
All right. Second it. Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Yes.
And. I believe when I made my motion, I said two thousand twenty-one. I did not indicate two thousand twenty-two as well.
Oh.
For that. For this levy rate.
Their levy rate is for two thousand twenty-one and through two thousand.
Yes. I apologize.
Yeah. Yeah. I think everybody understood.
That's a good.
Yep. Exactly.
I can't even believe it's almost there.
I know. I know.
Going two thousand twenty. I keep referencing two thousand twenty. Well, that's. Well done.
Yep.
Then I do have. Budget revisions that.
Do we have any other budget revisions?
The West Bank. No, sir. So they are. Um, out of the Catholic's budget. Um, from printing and practical services to record books. And they're storing some land books.
Okay. Motion to approve the this budget revision.
I make a motion to approve the budget revision presented by our clerk.
Now, second it. Commissioner Stone.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
I'll take that back to you, Don. Thank you.
There you go.
All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Linda. All right. Brings us down to the administrative report. Uh, Ms. Kathy Nace.
Uh, do you? Nothing. I'm stamping that. Um, you forgot to sign the budget, but.
Oh, okay.
It's just one of his copies.
Okay.
I totally forgot it. And. Uh, first, I'm on the budget. If we've already taken care of it. Claim deed. The next day. Uh, the next one is an update on a project list. If you remember, I've been working with Robbie Bala, the EDA. And we had been requested by the congressman to put forward what he was classifying as. Large, medium and small infrastructure projects. Uh, so. Uh, we have identified two large scale projects. One, medium project and two, small projects. Uh, the large projects are. And and we did prioritize these based on. Uh, where the projects were and also economic impact. The first one is the town of Rollsburg Water Treatment Plant and San Tire Sewer System upgrades. The cost is eleven million, one hundred and fifty thousand. Um, this system has been failing for a while and. It's. It's. It's paramount that this get moving because of a D P D E P order. Uh, it also is really stifling the growth of not only residential but business in that particular town. The the next large project is the Preston County PSD number four water source and treatment plant expansion project. They have been here before you. I think they have understood that this is a need for water sources. The estimated cost is eleven million, five forty-five, eight sixty-one. The medium projects that we've identified are the Preston County Fiber to the Home Broadband Project. It's for nine million dollars. This project will construct three hundred and eight point seven miles of fiber to the homes and two wires centers to service two thousand four hundred and four households in Preston County. Um, the small projects we've identified is PSD number one water treatment plan and water line upgrades. They were just before you. I think either last week or the week before. That project has six hundred and thirty-three thousand. I believe it. Talked. It addresses a settling pond and also addresses some water pipes. Um, the town of Roosted Mills. Bid for the Sandy Channel modification and parking lot. Cost is eighty-six thousand dollars. This is in the dam area there at Roosted Mills. It would. Uh, this is a project that's been out there for a while and we've been looking for funding sources. So. That's what we presented to the congressman. It was sent in by email on last Friday. Um, so. Uh, these. We're not exactly sure. Uh, where the funds for these would come from, but we certainly wanted our. Stuff in the hat. Uh, so we did. We did put that together for. For the Preston County. So hopefully we'll. Uh, get some good results from that. Any questions on what was sent to Congressman?
Now, you get the good job. Projects that we discussed and getting information needed, so.
Yeah. And of course. If they would need additional information, we'd be happy to to send that. We did send. Uh, some information, but these were. Just estimations at this time. Um, the next item I have for you is your I am responding. This is actually a. You have a subscription now. This subscription would not start till July one. It's in the new fiscal year. It is in your budget. Uh, the price this year is. Eleven thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. Uh, as it goes through. June thirtieth of twenty-two. Uh, I'd ask the president to be authorized to sign. We usually do these agreements in April or May just so that they can have everything set up. So I'd ask that the president be authorized to sign.
I make a motion to authorize the president to sign the I am responding subscription agreement for July one, two thousand twenty-one through June thirty, two thousand twenty-two in the amount of eleven thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars.
I will second it. Commissioner Stone.
Yes.
Yes.
I don't have any budget revisions for you.